100% was. I clicked the buttons, but it didn't do the thing. Did at least unmute the... Yes, okay, did unmute the desktop. Greetings, my friends and welcome back to our little Stardew session. In case you're new here, I am Sully the Technolich, master of local make-believe and your strange guide through an even stranger realm of curiosity and wonder. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Yeah, yeah, a little bit of a hand up. Oh well, it is our last little study session with Stardew. Uh, pre 1.6 update, because I think we're both pretty freaking excited for that, but...
It's gonna be here so soon.
It's so soon, it's just around the corner. And, uh, Incarnate is putting just the last little bits of like polish on there. So, any, any day now, just gonna, gonna drop on us. So, this will probably be our last, uh, session, uh, on stream for a little while. Yeah, on this save file, but we're gonna try to accomplish as much as we can today. Uh, try to learn as much as we can and then be as ready as possible for new 1.6 and enjoy all of it in context.
I just opened my inventory, I caught the midnight carp.
Oh yeah!
Did you need the midnight carp for something?
Uh, I wanna say we needed the midnight carp for one of our last fishing bundle. Um...
Is it the specialty? Was it a quest? Do you have a quest?
Oh, I may have had a quest for it, I very well could have. Um, aquatic overpopulation, I need to catch 10 midnight.
Oh, well, I only have one.
I haven't caught any yet, so I think it's counting us together.
Okay, cool.
That's nice.
Okay, cool.
Um, that the community board counts just for the whole farm. And that being said, you have to fish at midnight or later.
Did I buy a cow?
Uh, I don't remember if we bought the cow, but I know we preserved the space and started to build the barn.
The barn's ready.
Barn's ready, okay.
I just, I don't know if I bought a cow, I don't think I did. Wait, I did.
I could've sworn I...
I did buy a cow, cuz I named it Wellington.
I could've sworn I cleared these stuff.
Ooh, more hardwood for us!
Yeah. I'm gonna feel crazy, though.
I'm gonna go get crabs. Also, the spirits are annoyed today.
Yeah, last, last little bits of bug fixing, though I can't imagine there's too bad of bugs with Stardew. It's got a really good set of bones.
Oh yeah. I think it's just, um, I think the polish from everything I've been reading has more to do with the modding community. And make sure that everyone's mods are compatible and gonna be running and stuff like that.
I believe, uh, some of the, like, larger-known modders and, like, people have been doing it more. Uh, I've actually already received copies of 1.6 in some cases. Um, it's just still like they're receiving the versions that are fixes and polished right now. Yeah, that makes sense. Um, but I know that he's been working with a good number of the modders early, so that not a lot of the people who use heavy amount of mods have to, like, go without 1.6 forever. But that's of course gonna be mostly just for your, your main mods, like, and the multiplayer. You ready to go to the festival?
It's tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow, oh. I thought you were saying it was today?
No. No, it's a week from today, sorry.
Hmm, okay.
But I have some ones to, I have some gold star stuff that I've put in.
Yeah, so sorry, everybody.
And I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna go fishing today and see if I can catch any iridium stuff to grow in there. In our box.
I'm gonna do a forage lap, I'm gonna do some trash cannon.
Trash.
Uh, I'm gonna take a little skeletal tail over by Gunther's.
Yeah, do you have to take these midnight carp anywhere, or just catch them?
Uh, I'm not sure if I do have to take them anywhere. Check, so over the next six days, need a local angler to help reduce, no, just need the numbers.
Okay, so I can sell this?
We just gotta catch 10 of them. That's really nice, cuz we're gonna make the money off of it, too. Being able to make the money from it as well is a huge difference, I love that.
Crazy. Abigail, what are you doing here?
Hanging out. Little blackberry here.
Oh, do we get the bus repair?
Uh, I don't think so, I think we just got the, um, the mine cards, yeah. Right to museum. Get that tail.
Ooh.
The new museums, doesn't seem...
I wish I could pick the flowers, then.
Hmm, there.
Oh!
Is it by just a little bit?
No goob.
How dirty you have trash in your JoJo.
Out there.
Out there. Trying to get a trash can lid hat. Obviously, appreciate it.
Wow, green algae, always wanted.
Hey bud, can you go on somewhere so I can dig in the trash?
No, my blackberry almost fell in the water. I got a magnet ray.
Hey, stop that, yuck, well then, go away!
Oh, Alex caught you, dude.
Alex needs to mind his own business.
Ooh!
Alex needs to worry about making varsity.
Ouch.
He'd be real dumb if he didn't make varsity and he had the leather jacket on all the time.
I would be real dumb, you know, a couple people.
I knew a few people like that. And they all made fun of me in high school, so I'm getting revenge!
They did, too, for why?
For why? I could've taught them so much about like Dungeons and Dragons and, like, historical Satanism.
Yeah, I'm obviously the life of...
No one cares about Alex's opinion anyway, well that makes me feel...
Yeah, I've never even gotten, I think, to two hearts with Alex. Not on my list, so... Oh wait, no, I have, no, Sam took me.
Yeah.
Why can't I catch this fish?
Dash, maybe Goku.
No! I'm on the struggle bus over here, and I bet it's a sardine.
That's how it goes, isn't it?
Yeah, like the one I struggle the most with is like a sardine, or...
Like a silver sardine, you're like, "Oh, shut up."
Oh, it was an albacore.
Ooh!
And I got chest, so...
Catching tuna. According to FTA standard. Written on the dog of the bay.
Oh, the chicken coop is so cute.
What was that? No, the chicken coop, yeah, it's nice. Just sitting outside of the fishing screen. I wish you had like a little porch on the side or something, that'd be perfect. Sitting in a little porch chair and just fish.
Hot too, albacore.
At that point, I'm just doing what I'd... Armstead. I would spend a good fishing, catching and releasing. Some like catfish or some... Good times.
Mmm, delicious, what I always wanted.
My day today.
I'll get newspaper.
I've been getting nothing but gar... Not a fish in sight. Perfect. Mile pass. What was it though? Gold star. Okay. Talking crap onto fish, this showed up.
I said, "Do it again."
Hey bud, you trying to get schooled? You're trying not to laugh at him, it's funny. Yeah, man, it's a good pun.
It was a good one.
There we go. Hey, where you going? Go, go. Homyo fush. Homyo.
Midnight carp? It is a midnight carp! Maybe I should come back home and fit.
It was only a silver one.
I'm coming back home. I'm in the, I'm in the cedar sap room.
Oh, it does, it does, really loud.
Ooh, blackberry rage!
I had a cast like right before midnight, right at midnight.
Do you think I have time to cast?
I mean, we have till two. Time to cast once.
Sure, fun. Are you fishy?
Maybe catching algae.
Oh, I've seen what you've done with picking a... I ain't going to bed. Good night. Ooh, new record midnight carp. And six magma geodes, get on my level. And I got freaking bait for these crab pods. Sorry, I'm not selling my fish, I'm scared. Are you, are you in my house?
Yeah.
Oh, I went to your house, cuz that's where I thought you were.
UK!
What silly goober.
What was that, love?
Said, "What silly goober."
Yep.
Sunflowers! 24 blackberry.
Ooh! Got some crawfish.
Crawdaddies.
Crawdaddies.
Um, so fun fact about me, um, I didn't start liking seafood till I was almost in a pulp. And I still have yet to have a crawfish prepared in like, and I think it's just cuz I'm scared of crawfish alive, that it wigs me out and I don't wanna eat them. But I'm sure it's delicious, and it's on my list of foods to try, I'm just... Something about being terrified of the crawfish, and it's not. Cooked in a delicious sauce, fills me in. No, these stumps are definitely respawning, and I'm not sure if Wellington can get out of the barn.
Hmm. I don't remember those respawning. Remember stumps being a pretty, like, mixed thing.
Yeah.
And I definitely just boxed the hardwood I got out of them.
Yeah, you did.
Huh.
Maybe it's because we have... That's actually gonna be really good for like house upgrades and stuff like that.
Yeah!
Um, but if Wellington can't get out, we're gonna have to... Cause she's good. Touch it, wait no.
Yeah, I mean, I can regularly clear the stumps.
Okay, yeah. Let her out, ooh, ooh, I got a warp totem to the mountains! That's a mystery mask tool for later.
I said it to Gwen the other day and had to explain what it meant.
Oh no!
Which is my own poly.
My kiddos loved that.
Yeah, I have several of my siblings watched that one.
Mac Attack watched it.
That one, that one started when I was still fairly young and was still going afterwards.
It was like, I think it was like...
Hi Wellington! Yeah, in case you want. Do you have... Gods?
I don't know, I didn't check the fortune. So after the festival, we should sell all this, uh, gold star produce we made, except for the ones for the community. Those ones we... copies.
Ah yes, I can hear the spirits whispering something to me. Spirits are in good humor today, I think you'll have a little extra luck.
Oh, heck yeah.
Geodes.
I'm coming for you, there's so many in the trash.
That's why I was... Siding, talking up.
Oh yeah.
Let's go! Where'd you go? Alex probably... Who knows what all these are gonna turn into?
Yeah, I only carry like two, two tools on...
Depends on what I'm doing.
Yeah, unless I'm going to the mines, obviously. Well, I guess I know it's Wednesday. I'll get some more seeds tomorrow for empty spots, like some of the short day ones.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I love fish. Abigail?
Way... Head over to... ...and stop.
A tiger trout? And a copper oar! Where can we go? Elliot? Lions and all. A salmon!
Ooh! Parable.
Ooh! I think we need a fire opal for the... No, we turn that one in.
I know Gunther needs one. Yeah, I got it, I've already gotten like four or five different ones that we don't...
Oh.
Going great. Then of course your usual ore, clay, stone.
I have two hearts with Demetrius.
Nice!
That's never happened, I think it's cuz I've...
Hmm. Tiger's eye.
Ooh, that's, um, oku.
Yeah, 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 Sam. I'll, I'll turn this one into Gunther, but then in the future if we... I can gift him, or you can gift him, depending on... I typically go for Sam, so I don't initially dibs him this...
Romance Harvey. I always say I'm going to, and I... Harvey, where? I've never even been good enough friends with Harvey to go into...
Oh no! Lemonstone.
That's, that's literally you. Lemons. Us, give me a coffee.
Donate to museum. Wooey! Reward. City and vase. How's it going? Of course, a wonderful place, been there? Sure. Yeah.
Harvey! Did I coffee? Remember to cover your mouth when you sneeze.
Thanks, doc. Hello.
Whatever this fish is, it's wild, and...
Good luck!
Ha! Tiger trout.
You're now up to two iridium ore. Yeah, start!
This tiger trout season, I think, is...
Catching a lot today?
Also trying... Going for it. Ugh! You did!
Huh?
Forward. I decided to blah blah instead.
Appreciate it, but thankfully, we're, we're past the first few minutes. As long as there's an excessive eat.
That's what I'm worried about opening Pedro's box.
That is valid.
Have to walk.
This is, I wish the chairs would sit. Crazy. Beating tan. Man, I love fishing. Don't get... Yep. More mouth bat, yeah.
Why's your fishing pole is different?
Ooh, yeah! Ooh, woods gear.
No, we need that.
I think we already got turned in. We're, we're really ahead on these. Um, yeah, catfish or tiger, oh, we need tiger trout. Sold them all, didn't you?
Nope.
That's alright.
I'm gonna see if I can fish my box.
Yeah, see if it's still up on top. We need sandfish, pufferfish...
It's not.
That's right. Sandfish, pufferfish, and sturgeon.
I hate cut. The sacrifice. Mmm, trash.
Mmm, my favorite. Those damn sturions.
Don't litter, kid. A JoJo cola.
Are you washing meat fish?
Oh no, I also got...
No, you also got, yeah, what'd you get? My goodness.
It's down here. A zard down here.
Around the outside of the pond as well.
Midnight carp.
Not quite yet. No, I got one! I got one at 11:50!
I caught another woods gear. But I wanted a midnight carp.
One or two more tonight, come on, game.
Rage.
Give me the mid... Give me...
I'm close enough to... Faints cuz I get stuck in this water system. Oh my gosh.
Dang it! One more! Ooh! Ah! One more fish! Not JoJo! I'm wanting the JoJo. Give me the trout. Oh, bless me. If it's not half, then it's not half. Double bless me. It's gracious.
Air jelly is done.
Thanks!
I was gonna go self... I got stuff.
I wasn't close at all!
Level nine fishing!
No lovers, but we did make some money. We also, if we are ever tight on money, we have a box of gemstone.
You have a box of gemstones, that would make us so much money so quickly, you have no idea.
Mm-hmm. Or it could make us instantly maximum lovers with Krobus.
You know? Priorities.
Pros and cons. That way every...
Want me to go get seeds?
Um, that's, that's... Do we have, uh, room, do we need to plant more stuff?
Uh, I mean, we have room for like just little stuff, like the coupled stuff.
Oh, then up to you, I'm, I'm not pressed.
Yeah, I think we're good.
We're doing really good on the, the...
Good morning, cookies! Oh, big eggs. Oh, why are you mad, Nugget?
Hey, we're Nugget!
Well, Cordon Blue is just fine. Happy, cousin Wellington.
So was, uh, was Cordon Blue in the, uh, chicken version of High School Musical?
It's a bad joke.
But it made you laugh, so, you know, I win. Ultimately. It would you want? Oh, wow, Pokemon. Uh, I think I'm gonna go... The mines. And, uh, just, uh, work on clearing stuff there.
I'm stuck.
Forever. That is free energy.
Excuse me. I was just sitting here trying to breathe air. That was not a fun... Um, I would rate that experience 2 out of 10. I need to watch. I have large eggs for the chimney.
I also left my, um, order.
Oh, good. But you can't catch my fish.
That must be Krobas.
Actually, yeah, I don't know.
Think we need the.
Is Krobas not in the sewer? Oh.
Oh, wait.
Did we get the skeleton key?
I don't remember.
We did get the skeleton key. Where are you?
Does that mean we can go down into the sewers?
Yes.
Let's do that. I, uh, I'm over at the mines, but I'm gonna head toward the center of town and I'll just beach it.
Yeah, go to the chimney. I'll walk you down to the opening. And the cedar sap forest. We might be able to get into the opening at town. Ooh, actually, I can't remember if there's monsters in.
Got a weapon.
Okay, cool. You're gonna have to cover me.
I got you.
Cookie.
Our total earnings so far at a hundred and four K.
The bundle. Large egg from my happen chicken. Oh, this is the, if we finish this bundle, this is the, the. Greenhouse bundle, the important bundle.
Very important. Getting a greenhouse done before your first winter would.
Iconic. I'm back. To be a douche. Oh dear, tiny crab appears to have made his home in my pocket shirt. What a strange thing to say. I don't know if we can get down this way. It's locked. Wait.
Yeah, probably gonna unlock it from the inside.
Oh, I almost threw my fishing pole away. That was really scary. Leah, hello. I wish I could steal these.
I like how you're socializing with everybody and I'm just waiting for them to move, so I.
Yum, me wait.
Berry.
Little rat eye. The first guy picked blackberries.
Oh my goodness, there's two bushes over here.
Oh, this one time in second grade, I read this really sad book called The Blackberry. Oh my gosh, it was so sad. It was so good, though. But I really don't think I should have read that. But my teacher did.
Let's go. Locked. You have the key?
I don't.
You have to bring.
Wait, I do have the key. I thought the skeleton key opened this. Why isn't this not working? Am I silly? Did I make that up? Let me answer right.
Hmm, let me look up what the skeleton key opens real quick.
Oh, wait, does it open the skull cap? It might open this.
Key obtained on floor one twenty unlocks the door to the skull cavern in the desert. Yeah. And the Junimo arcade game in the Star Drop Saloon.
Oh.
Train is passing through Stardew Valley.
Yeah, up by the relax house, the bath house, the relax house.
Oh, you're right. You wanna go take the train?
We can't take the train.
Oh, you can't take it? Oh, okay.
But sometimes if coincidentally you're up there when the train passes, it'll drop something. But it's so sporadic. Can you talk to the hat mouse?
I have it in a minute, so I'm gonna go do that real quick.
Get all these blackberries for it.
If there's any hat. Very important, having a good hat.
I'm wearing a hat there. Thank you, gift.
All the blackberries. Chicken leaves. Of any. Have like.
Oh yeah.
Do a little detail. For the difference. Woo. BP?
Yeah. Had a long day hammocking.
Fair. Take it out of you. Stress that. Currently up to forty-six blackberries.
Sixty-four.
Damn. Think it's a blackberry jelly?
Uh, wild plum jelly.
Hmm. It just sounds good. Bro.
Uh, you can get some at the farmer's market.
That'd be good.
Know those blackberries behind our furnace? Oh, I can, I can reach them. It's like. Oh, is it fishing? There are little trees everywhere making a boat for me. I think I'm gonna clear the farm sometime. After, of course, all these fit.
Did a fairly initial trim of the tree to give us ass between. Haven't done. Sewer has a difference.
I'm gonna Google fish tiger sharks. Tiger sharks, tiger trout.
Tiger trout. Yeah, cuz we still need one for the community center.
Yeah, cuz.
Alright, it was just a good day for him. For another day, okay? As if I haven't sold one along the way as well. I'm sure I have. That's not. No more garbage. Ooh. Hundred point store. Give me. Also. Quarantine pools. A bit. Just a bit. Oh no. Off the map. Oh. I got a sass me game.
Hmm, ow.
No. Come on, man.
I saw some stinky spirits today, it seems like.
Feels like. Feels like someone's pranking me.
Goodness.
Wake up. Everybody should put a little makeup. One midnight trap. All I need today. Just one.
One midnight carp?
Yeah. Let's think of the tiger.
Wow, it's hard. Give me a freaking fish, please.
Give me fish. That's not fish.
It could be a fish.
No.
It might be a fish.
No. Driftwood no fish. Driftwood no Loch Ness monster.
Oh my gosh, they, uh, they found some, uh, three stories bones the other day of a dinosaur and they were like, wow, this dragon. And a bunch of people are like, actually goes closer to the Loch Ness. Uh, cool.
Like a plesiosaur?
What?
Like a plesiosaur?
Yeah, but not quite. It was another, ooh, level six farming.
Cheese press! Cheese! We can make cheese.
Um, cheese is my favorite food group.
Their best food. Speaking of food groups, I'm not even doing it. You know what I was gonna do.
Do it, do it, do it.
You already know. Little fresh. Oh, it's raining nice. Let me check the spirits. Ah, yes, I can hear the spirits. Spirits are very displeased today. They will do their best to make your life miserable. Cheese! Indeed. Quite a monster when it comes to cheese. Oh. I think it's quite gouda.
You don't have.
Oh. These puns just keep getting chattered.
Oh, it's so good.
I can make cheesy puns all day.
You are a cheesy.
That's fair. I'll take that.
Those are hard cheese. For the pun of cheat.
Oh.
Elliot likes crabs, right? Am I making that up?
I think so. Like king crabs or something. Probably a fancy guy. Give me fishy. I demand it. I require it.
He likes crab cake.
Ah, so you're gonna turn into something. Yeah, yeah, that's a problem. I mean, we could expand the house, but probably wanna move my house first. Come on, don't do this. I'm gonna catch you whether you like it or not. Better tire out real quick. Man, it's not tough. Oh, man. Oh, man. Oh, this one's work. This one is work. Come on.
I bet it was.
Most likely.
Probably a ghost fish.
Oh, expanding the house doesn't actually require any further space. It can take up the same silhouette on the surface. Heck yeah. The interior does not count against the exterior. Hey, got a ghost fish.
Hold it, we need that for the.
Really?
That's gonna finish up the.
Fish? No, we already got ghost fishing. It was a good try though. I'm sure the lava fishing spot would actually do. I need, just, oh shit. Yeah, one on. I'll try the lava. If I catch anything better there. I probably should also like pick up some bait and stuff like that, right? Yeah. Good thing we got mine carts. Here. Here. What? I pick up a new, definitely pick up. Yeah. Good stuff. With me. Oh, I did see some. Oh, I don't.
Carolyn just told me it was a fine looking day out. I don't think she's been outside yet.
Maybe she has a different definition. Wait, have I not met Willie yet? I may make herself home. I've definitely been by Willie's. Hey, what are you going about? Down here. I got a new fishing pole. Like, I can't get that by myself. Um, I think I'm good on fishing. Go ahead and get a trap bobber. Oh wait, they, they like use up, don't they? Tackles. Buy two, just. Keep. These could, I think, is like. Cute. Get way to do. He can.
Press Y to.
Uh, no, no, I'm using mouse keyboard. I got loaded. I just, I can't load a bobber. I don't know if it doesn't work the same or.
I bet you don't have room on your fishing.
Well, like I can take the bait out and. Doesn't equip the thing. You know what goes great with the second favorite hella freshens? What's that, Clark? What you got, bud?
No relevant opinion. Tiger trout.
Hydrate.
Got it.
Oh no, I don't even have water with me. I have an energy drink right now. You take that into consideration. I don't know. I think he's just going.
Cool.
Three, four, five, six. Cool. Water. Well, I will drink some water after stream, but for now I need an energy drink, so. Oh, it's gonna, this is gonna make me burp. It's gonna make me burp. Ew. I'm sorry it's gonna keep happening cuz I was like four chugs. I gotta go with three more. Alright, I feel gross. Alright, I feel gross. Thanks bud, I'm hydrated. There's like, a lot of... A lot of sweetness in my mouth, I know. Yeah, of course. Oh, excuse me. That was something else. Oh! Long as you're happy with the results, buddy. I'll take that. Let me look up how to bobber. Goodness gracious, I'm still, they're much quieter now, but I'm still... Oh, excuse me! Oh my goodness. Oh, you need the iridium rod to use bobbers. Uh, they're pretty expensive, but do you mind if I buy just one?
Yeah, go for it.
It's like seventy-eight hundred.
We have so much, oh...
Oh yeah, we got a box of rocks! What am I worried about?
And, and Willie's gone though. Willie just walked up.
Yep. Gone. Going to the bar. Now I know. Now I know for, I mean, it's literally why we're playing this, this farm. Heck yeah. We'll do that tomorrow. I wouldn't necessarily say we're gonna speedrun 1.6, but... We're definitely not gonna be slow when it starts. We're gonna know exactly what we're doing. Dang it. All these other furnitures can be, I'll be just like... We got bottled wine!
Artist in good turn and an enchanted...
Wins across the board. Uh-uh. Hmm? So yeah, everything up to the fire rebase pole can use bait, and then after that you wanna use... Bobbers have like, big of...
I'm gonna cut to another midnight carp.
I'm gonna try.
Oh, I heard my discord go off and I thought it was...
Oh.
But here's the kicker, I'm up in the mountain.
Oh! Oh! You are playing a dangerous game!
Yeah. You have midnight carp, or sturgeon, I'll take either. That's what I came up with.
I got a driftwood.
And I got a walleye. I'm coming home.
Caught two pieces of driftwood. Come on.
It closed, oh.
Come on.
Come on.
Farming! Take a bass! Get out of here.
Salmonberry wine. And then you can put your wine in the preserve jar to age it.
Oh nice.
Same with your cheese.
I knew you could do it with the cheeses, I didn't know you could do that with... That's really cool.
Oh my god, that's wonderful.
Yeah. Yes, lady. Oh, you can also make all the bobbers, you just, okay, well... You gotta get pretty high level to... Crafting recipes, fun. Check and see if we have them though, so I don't go buying a bunch of... I don't think we can make iridium poles ourselves.
Oh, it's raining.
Don't think we have anything to worry, worry about. Make spinner tackles and trap bobbers. Those, yeah, definitely cheaper for us. To lose them or anything. Uh, hmm. Oh, the glowstone ring is both a... Um, a light ring and a magnet ring.
Oh.
Mm-hmm, it emits a constant light and also increases your radius for collecting on... Warrior ring, occasionally infuse the wearer with warrior energy after slaying a monster, so like Berserker... Probably do either extra damage or take less damage. And then sturdy ring, which cuts the duration of negative status effect, poisoned. Okay. That is super handy, we can actually kind of go for those quicker next time and... Awesome. There we go.
Her fence over...
Ooh, what happened?
Lightning.
Think our lightning rod will be doing more about that.
Well, it's just, just happens. Why there's the...
Checks out. Not sure what time Willie's open. Okay. Alright, that way. Around for some roots to gather. Oh, it's not great.
You put a fish tank in my house?
Yeah, surprise! So far I've just put a bass and a ghostfish in it, but add whatever else to it.
I was so excited.
It's a large fish tank, so you should be able to put quite a few in there.
Heck yeah, did you know you can put hats on sea urchins?
I did not, but that's amazing! Do we have extra hats already? I'm gonna go with... Iridium rod, seventy-five hundred. There we go. Okay, so you can both bait and, um, bobber your iridium rods. They have two slots, as opposed to... Ooh. That is handy, because that means you can increase your bite chance... And/or increase... Decay or... I like that. Makes the fishing... Not that it's not a good fishing system, it doesn't require a lot of effort.
Oh, I can't catch those sturgeon, because it's not purgans.
What season are sturgeon, and what?
Uh, spring and winter, any weather.
And what kind of water?
Like...
Yep. Wild seed finished, so... Brew some arugula. In, killing it. That I can do. Know we have. The mines. He... Kind of crazy lava level... Bitch. Knick-knack, party where give a dog a bone! Whoopsie. Man, all that for a joja? Two jojas, man, how much joja is in this lava?
All of it.
Three, three jojas. And I hope it's a bad day, that's all I'm gonna say. I hope the spirits are in their worst mood, cuz... This is nonsense. After a certain number of times, it becomes insulting. Yet... Game insists. Oh, my lanta. Man, at this point it's gotta be impressive. That many cast in a row. Fish. Are there fish in the lava?
Yeah, there's lava fish in the...
Oh! Oh, come on. Come on! Yes.
Did you get it?
I got a lava eel.
Nice. Put that in my...
And a chest.
Ah, chicken statue.
Love it.
I find chicken statues on... Every mountain, but just...
Just drinking a bunch of sodies. MOPG. Eh, come on! Maybe something else. Amy's bullying me. It's messed up. Do nothing. Come on now. At a certain point, random number generation just... Random anymore. I won't... Be that one. Few more days. Two. Ish. Better? Perfect. On a walleye. An iridium walleye. I'll make a little... Dang it. Clear line. In the box. Walleye. Good walleye too.
There is now a chest bichlin.
Nice.
Hurt not one in the mines, but the, the bust. Hurt not one in the mines, but the the bust bunches up in here.
Thanks. Thank you, babe.
Welcome. That ' s just how.
Give me that cart. Ah.
It ' ll rain again tomorrow.
Ace. Yish. Yish 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 yish. Ooh. Oh. Oh goodness. Don ' t think so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Dang. Actually let me know. Yeah. And I believe you need some.
I don ' t think we do.
I should. Not.
You can put it in my fish.
Yeah. Good night.
Good night.
I ' m gonna start to level up. Start to level skills I haven ' t. It ' s raining.
Evelyn gave me a couple.
Way to pick up these.
Well, you have to add, you have to. What happened to our cranberry bush?
Died. Alright, now I was quoting uh newer God of War games. There ' s a a moment when Atreus and his son goes, oh, what happened to him? And Kratos, all he says is, he died. Oh. Hmm. He needs wood bars. Bye bye like. deductions.
World production.
Yeah, that ' s my thought. re here nice and useful.
Are you planning on moving?
Uh, no, I was just thinking about um finding a new way to to reorganize them, but for right now I don ' t have. Do my thing. I '
Bopper. Our cow isn ' t old enough to make cheese.
This is a good. own those copper bars you just made in the brown shells. Imagine. Maybe. Oh, it ' s an artifact. Oh, so selling. Here I was thinking.
Oh pumpkins.
Recipe.
One, two, we need five. There are pumpkins.
Still.
Could be more pumpkin.
We need quartz for something and I cannot remember. Seem to have the recipe on.
It ' s also a super old gift.
Could be it. Where is that? Out loud. How do you always manage to make it out to that center hole that I never did cast in magic. Cast in. Get the shot. I go.
After my.
Oh, good job. That ' ll start pretty well there.
back.
Oh. Well, have a good party break. Always appreciate. So bang. Who are friends with? All four. Can I imagine if they ' re near the mountain. chest. Moods. Oh. Sure. I ' m sorry. Yeah. I think so. That would be very cool. Everywhere you went. When you walk into a room, do you say roll initiative? I don ' t know. Long week. Between extra work and extra task sat work, I think we both pretty busy this week. There we go. There we go. Levels up and fishing. Now I can make cork bobbers and I got the crafting recipe for treasure hunter. Ooh. That must be another bopper that I didn ' t know about. That would be really nice. I actually kind of just want to play with that for a little. Let me see what it takes to craft, ' cause I ' m learning that it ' s easier to craft these. Um. Crafting. Two gold bars. That ' s it. So easy. Oh, fair is happening tomorrow. It ' s what I ' m, there ' s a nine a. m. in the town square tomorrow. gonna have so many things to display. Is this the one where we bring nine? Uh, and the main reason we ' ve been saving all of this gold star stuff in the green chest was for that. But now we can really go. We got gold hops, gold pumpkins, gold hazelnuts, gold eggplants, gold bok choy. We ' re gonna be all in everybody ' s favor. We don ' t wanna do the gold pumpkins, saving those. That, how many you need per community? Five. Oh yeah, and then we ' re done. That ' s fine. We didn ' t do, we don ' t need the melons. No, you only need three of the four. Gold, gold, gold. Oh, there it is. Right. Um. Yeah. Oh, actually, I just. Bundle complete. Reward. All crops and animal bundle. We need either large milk or large goat milk. Uh, we need wool or duck egg. The other one that was in there. And once we get the animal bundle done, we get the greenhouse. Yes. Awesome. Bulletin board. The enchanter. You already turned in the bottle of wine. You rock. Have its foot palm. Okay. Field research. We just need a nautilus shell. Dye bundle. We need a duck feather and a red cabbage. Chest bundle. We need everything ' cause we don ' t have kitchen yet. Butter bundle. We need everything ' cause we haven ' t a lot of that. Okay. Twenty five. Let ' s wait on that. Hmm, that would be a decent. Oh, let me just sell some of our. Keep like one of each, if not each. We ' ll see where that puts us. Thank you. Thank you. I ' m gonna, not gonna do this to a lot of it. Just gonna do one quick clean path, so right easier. Any question? Any question? Uh, no, I think it was red cabbage and duck feather.
Throwing.
Nice. Okay, uh, fair starts tomorrow, so, yay. Messed up this new fishing bobber. Oh, so they have durability, tackles have durability. They're not instant usable. Right out. Come on. All this and no treasure menus? Nope. Misjudged. Come on. On game, no. No. Whatever that was, it must've been good. That was a struggle. Damn. Perfect. How am I still catching record-sized bass at this? That's crazy. Is she? Oh, salmon. We caught a salmon? Yeah, alright, I got one to turn in community. An iridium bass for us to turn in tomorrow if you'd like to. Woohoo. Well, I guess, do we wanna do that, or should it just be stuff from our farm? Go, go, go. They don't remember what all the festival does and doesn't give you positives. I don't wanna. Get made fun of like when we did the soup, apparently the fish was bad. Apparently. Woo. Wow. Pretty them. Diversity is a positive. Okay, that's good to know. So, want as varied of stuff possible. I think having stuff from other seasons could maybe be good, because that would allow some easy diversity, but I don't know. Tiger trout. Oh, you already got that turned in. Heck yeah. Other fish is probably a weird ocean fish. No. Uh, did not have good luck with this bobber though. Okay. Diversity by category, so fish, forage, gems, crops, flowers, etc. Perfect. Eye cat. Hey, we got some extra gems we can bring, like three or four of, we. I'll bring two iridium fish. Ooh, let's get some sort of beer done. Heck yeah. Uh, I don't have one on me, but I. We have a gold hop. Okay. Arty. So, I'll grab four items, you grab five? Um, let me. I haven't entirely decided decided, but I think I'm gonna take my two iridium fish. Old items we've been. Think. Uh, oh, that's a great idea. Uh, yeah, I'll grab an aquamarine. Good, we should draw there, we got both. Precious stone with a brilliant green color, a pale green ornamental stone. That emerald seems to be worth. Um, and I got four, so if you wanna take five items. You can take five different gold star crops, and I think we'll be perfect. In any other bundles. Easy, easy, cuz we got gold hot peppers, gold melons, hazelnut, gold. Still have some in the harp, but I got iridium fish, I got those. Happens. Right. Yeah, I think it'd be handy that way. Mm-hmm, don't be too tired. Yes, there we go. Yeah. That is. Dang. Alrighty. And our mushroom tree has grown, grown into a second mushroom tree, and then the third one sprouting, yep, awesome, we're gonna have a whole little mushroom field over here. I did manage to get two of the stumps to stop respawning. So now, uh, yeah, Wellington can get out and the fence hold nice and sturdy. Perfect. I mean, we still have respawning hardwood, that's. Crazy in all of itself. Cycling. Oh, that's not bad either. Up to you, look, we got thirty minutes till the festival starts, so. Oh, wait, wait, will you be, yeah, cuz you're bust up, yeah. It'd be good. Valley Fair has begun in town square. No rush. Thankfully, once we're there, it's not time. Then you have your five objects? Yeah.
Alright, you ready, Ray?
Uh, I think so. Let me move over. Little monster.
Oh, I forgot this is the one with all the fun games.
Yeah. Gotta get star tokens, and then see if we can get any prizes. There we go. Big day, I'm most proud festival of the year, the Stardew Valley Fair. Like to participate by getting, setting up a green's display, I've left an empty stand for you, just let me know when you've set everything up, so we can get to the judging.
Feel free to arrange the, uh, completely smoothie.
Looks fine. Hey, talk to everybody, so.
Play some games.
Cool. Yeah, alright.
How do I get star tokens?
Uh, you win games. See you. And there's a lot of people I don't recognize.
Yeah, they're just like.
Tourists. Pet and zoo. Hey, it's the boys. What's up, guys? Yeah, it's alright. A fortune teller. Hello, buddy. Oh, and I have known each other for a long time, she's a rock with the. Buster. Yeah, I'll read my fortune. Hmm. Ever having dinner? You hang your head. Hurry off into the dark. Crystal ball is moved on. Ah, you're in combat, there's something dreadful bearing down on you from the dark. Hmm. Weird. Wow, Clinton, nice stand, dude. I can blame it on my job sometimes, but I do take pride in my work. There's some of my finest pieces, hope you like them. I don't know, I don't know why she was so mean to me, but I, I'm just gonna move on. Alright. Yeah, I don't know. Apparently, I'm sad. Oh, I remember being good at this game. Uh, cuz it's, it's like it's a guess, it's totally guessing, but.
I have any star tokens.
Oh, that's right, that's right, you gotta win the star tokens, then the, I'll do the fishing game. I remember this one being a fun way to.
That and the little strength stat.
Perfect. If we can keep that going. Come on, come on, come on, come on. My. Another. Yeah, pretty much. Pretty much what she said, Ray. I don't know. It probably just based off of like levels and who you've socialized with the more, and I have not socialized, so. I was doing research on all the other mechanics, nothing wrong. That was the part I usually pay attention to. I'm doing fish. Oh.
Good stuff. Obviously.
Ooh, come on. One more. Perfect. That's time, one fifteen. Not bad. Fish caught five. Two hundred and fifteen, perfect. Three hundred and ninety-six star token.
I've been playing the strength game, and then I gambled away all my star tokens, I say I've made a mistake. I got fifty.
Bad. Strength level, iron. Did I win anything from that? Oh, I didn't win any.
No, you have to, it's gotta be a perfect class.
Ah. The slingshot game.
I've never played that one.
Not bad. Sixty-six percent, or sixty-six score with eighty-four percent accuracy.
Wait, what was that?
Four ninety-nine, eighty start up, okay. But it is definitely easier to win tokens at the fishing game for me personally. One more round of fishing games and then see what I can win.
No, I opened my text box.
Uh. Oh no, I don't, I don't know.
I don't either, and it just dicked my fishing. I don't either, and it just dicked my fishing.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. It's just the back bumper is controlled.
Oh.
Done, now I, okay. I close that.
But imagine maybe B, but I don't know. Hmm. I guess this would be B or the pause button.
Very simple.
Hmm. Time is time. Alright, five ninety-six. See what I can get with five hundred and ninety-six. Hello, hello. Ooh. Ooh, very little. Ha ha. Well, at least gotta get that rare crow. It's like the house moving castle reference.
Yeah. Turnip pad, man.
Yeah, dude. Gotta get me.
Ooh, my score is one-one-one. I'm on one.
Ooh. Get that rare crow. Fish, give me fishing. They all keep getting me with that little dip downwards. Perfect. Perfect. Let's go. Probably get one more. Yes. Perfect. That should give me a rare crow. One thirty-seven plus perfection bonus on at least three. Hundred ninety-seven. Yups. That's a rare crow in the back.
I'm gonna start. Can look at him on the bottom corner of his screen.
Oh, you're just freaking... Six ninety-five? Nice. I'm at nine ninety-two. I'm gonna go buy the rare crow. Ah. Now, go buy the rare crow.
We're hiccuping bourbon, often babies.
Alright, uh, I've done everything I want to do at the fair, uh, so once you're ready.
I just would like to finish my fishing game, and then we can do the thing, and then I think this would be a good start.
I think it's a great stopping point and a great place for us to pick up with one point six, edge up to in the future, and, uh, surpass, do even better than...
I'm so excited for the new farm layout. That's what I'm waiting for, cause I've played all the farm layouts.
Yeah, I think you've played maybe, maybe more than one of each even.
I have.
Yeah. Like, I know you've played through a few times with various friend groups and by yourself, so...
Yeah, me and my best friend from high school are going to Stardew.
Ooh, that sounds exciting. Any big plans for the themes or the, uh...
I don't know yet.
Ah, hell yeah.
We'll probably make it actar theme, I guess.
That's fair. Or just general, like, fantasy escapism.
My name is Amo Pig Xamaranth. Ooh, two twenty-nine perfection.
Ace.
With my token.
Yeah, eleven twenty-seven. Thinking about buying anything?
Yeah. Ew, that kid's got a dumb head.
Yeah, that kid is so freaking squished. I keep looking at him. I keep walking past him, like, man, that kid is... That kid ain't right. I can't see how well you're doing, unfortunately.
Oh dang. Perfect.
Perfect! Nice! I just wa, I just looked over at your screen and watched you nail it. Alright, let's see if I can do it. Okay, so it's, it's a little bit of a delay.
Ooh.
Okay.
About a hundred hay. Cause, you know, winter's around the corner.
Right.
Ooh, and I got you a pen. I'm at a, I'm at, I'm gonna go gamble the rest of this night. And then I'm gonna call it good.
I remember I used to just go play the fishing game once and then gamble it up, but... I don't know if there is an actual way to game this, or if I just got really lucky pretty often.
Are you gonna...
I, I can't while you're doing it.
Oh, okay.
Right up the color, place your bet. Uh, green. Uh, I'm gonna bet max. In this case, ninety-two. On green, come on.
Ooh.
Orange. I lose. That's fine.
Okay, I got fifty-six star tokens, let's see.
What you doing, green or orange?
Green.
Green? Alright.
Green's my gamble always.
Hey, look at that! They've doubled their money to one-twelve.
Yay, and now we're gonna gamble it all the way.
On green? What if you get green twice in a row, though?
Oh no. Then we're gonna go up one more time, gamble on green, and then if we get it again, we're gonna go all the way up, gamble on orange.
Well, that's another green. Two twenty-four.
Oh, don't do this to me, Stardew.
Oh, bitch, you got it. Come on, bitch, you got it.
Oh my god. One more on green, last one on orange.
Ah, just barely. Just barely won it. Alright, last one on orange. Four forty-eight, two...
My formula is...
Either zero or double.
I, I think it's gonna be zero. I think there might be four oranges on a rotate, or, ah...
And it's green, you lose.
I do.
Game over.
I don't wanna play your stupid game.
Alright, we can just tell the mayor you're ready whenever you're ready.
Walk faster.
No, I keep standing in this way.
Judge me. Judge us.
Yeah, judge. I think we'd be pretty good.
I hate that everybody else's display is, like, looks nicer and more full.
Yeah, like they get organized and...
Yeah.
That being said, we definitely have the best diversity. Couple different seasons, got a couple different types. Your Grange display has been judged. Return to Mayor Louis.
Hey, ready?
Yep, 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 yep.
Can you talk to him, or do I have to?
Congratulations, you won first place with a rating of ninety-four!
Oh, hell yeah.
We just got a thousand freaking star points apiece!
What do I even use it? Here, I'll go see if there's anything left to shop for me to clean out, and then...
Wait, did he say that we can clean out our display box?
Yeah.
Oh, we keep all this?
Yeah, are you gonna grab it?
Yeah, I'll just grab everything. That's awesome. I forgot about that detail. That makes it even cooler. I thought we were spending that stuff. Go team, hell yeah!
Yeah, so we can sell it when we get home.
Alright, um, I'm gonna take this light green rug. And a hundred hay.
Right.
I'm set to go when you are, dude.
I want that star drop.
Oh, you want this? You can do it. I believe in you. You're at a thousand? You turn five hundred into a thousand, can you turn one thousand into two?
Yeah. I'm real confident in myself.
I believe in you.
No!
No!
Alright, um, let's blow this popsicle drain.
I agree, it's good.
Blow this popsicle stand. I'm gonna sell all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, and then I'm gonna put a hop in the, in the cave. Cause we each need to bring ammo, payload.
Fair enough. I'm gonna go put our house moving castle friends down here. Mister turnip head. There you are. Haven't encountered any crows. Good job. Keep an eye.
I was just gonna throw that one in the box.
Yeah.
Cause that'll save a ton of money, this one.
Throw it in this red chest? Is the fedora the hat?
Yeah.
Or the gift?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now I look like a twenties detective. I can tell by the way she walked in the room. She wasn't every ordinary farm girl.
I've put on your little straw hat. To go with my overalls. To go with my overalls. My house is getting a little cramped, not gonna lie.
Fair. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and sell these iridium quality fish. We've shown them all.
I'm gonna go ahead and sell those gems too.
Yeah, cause we have extras of most of our gems.
Yeah, not those ones, but we'll fight them over.
Yeah, yeah, these ones are super common. These ones, I must say, I sold like three or four of. Also, I put a new little, uh, flower vase in your house.
I know, I saw. I put mine outside.
Nice.
Festival day, we're still making bank.
Your score and then keep all the stuff in the Grange box, so every year you just re, oh! I didn't even realize you could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 Grange box, meaning a chest on your farm. Yeah, 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 that's cool. I never would've thought to do that.
I'm just glad it doesn't rot, or my personal safe file would be full of stuff.
Yeah, there'd be so much, so much that's gone and just ruined.
Me too. Oh.
Uh, no, I just wanted to see how the rug looked when I actually put it down. It's... Yeah, you're totally good to, to kill it. I just wanted to see what the decorations look like. Hell, yeah, hell yeah. And of course, because this was a sponsored stream today, we won't be doing a raid on the way out, but, uh, one last thank you to everybody who came and hang out with us today, played some Stardew. Uh, thank you to everybody who's been listening to me blab about HelloFresh, and thank you to HelloFresh for sponsoring this series of streams. It's been an absolute blast, and, uh... I think, I think that's about all we got for today. Anything you wanna say to the chat before we get out of here? Be good to yourselves, get some rest, get some food, uh, and I will catch you on Tuesday for some Baldur's Gate, and then maybe later in the week, whatever else we can make time for. Thank you so much. It's been a great month, and you guys have helped make it great, so thank you for being here. Thank you for bringing the energy and then meeting me where I was at. It's been a great time. Hope you guys get good rest, good sleeps, good eats, whatever else you might need in between. Uh, until next time, uh, I'll catch you guys later. Bye-bye!
Bye!